Yeah, I'm guessing whatever they're saying that there's something you should do is a good standing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're starting out. Also his. I guess they have to do a community service or something.
It's city.
Anything like that. I was trying to be interested.
Would you check it some things?
Oh, I'll figure it out.
Okay.
You can tell my keys in the door.
He said he was.
Gave me one of these.
Okay. Same. Grab your keys.
For somebody to walk in on him? I might move some if I want to get him out of there. Huh? Not girl. Okay.
And I've talked to him. He worked with me over thirty years. We don't have what's needed by another possibility is that. Good letter of recognition. He's your sister.
See, it's your turn.
Yep.
I want to own that, but is that who you're seeing right now? Why do you have a good job? Of stuff, yeah.
Where are you going? He's already signed.
What?
Yeah, they pulled the meter. A week ago, that's what that hatch in the middle of COVID had to go out there to convert the meter off the main one. Now just wait for this. These were come from it. Once he gets to it, he said it should be ready in about two weeks.
What is that over there?
So on a console.
Did you hide your remote? Missed you or missed your phone?
Pretty much.
I'm glad you pressed yourself. That was more stone face than going again.
You know, so I have to let Patrick put some paperwork together for you. He's lawyerized.
I should have known what should have happened.
So I assume I need to include Leah's little call.
Uh, well, Leah's done, so her resignation has, yeah, she's officially resigned, so it was Bridget, so.
That's what I said. No, go ahead.
I think her resignation was decided.
Ten, yeah.
Keep an eye on you.
You're a little bit too old for that.
I've done it.
All right. Welcome to the June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five Dayton Town Council meeting. Uh, before we start, uh, I'm gonna remind everybody about public comments. Uh, we welcome public comment and encourage active participation at this meeting. However, in order to proceed efficiently, public comment will be limited to two areas of this meeting. First, there will be an opportunity for public comment on ordinances or resolutions currently before the council. These comments should be limited to three minutes in length and be germane and relevant to the ordinance or resolution. All participants will be required to maintain a high level of civility, respect, and courtesy for everyone present. Any participant who, after being advised, persists in discourteous or hostile manner, which may disrupt the meeting, will be asked to leave. At the end of the meeting, time, at the end of the meeting, time will be reserved for public comment on any issues or concerns you have. Uh, please remember to keep your comments concise and limited to three minutes. Finally, the open comment section is not an opportunity for you to make inappropriate comments about or personally attack council members or town officials. Again, all participants are required to maintain a high level of civility, respect, and courtesy for everyone present. Any participant who, after being advised, persists in a discourteous or hostile manner, which may disrupt the meeting, will be asked to leave. This is your opportunity to contribute to the community and assist the council in addressing the issues that are important to the town. So, uh, since we, Bridget is no longer with us and Leah is no longer with us, I'm gonna do roll call. Uh, Steve?
Here.
Rocky?
Present.
Carla?
Present.
And myself, four, four council members present. Our first order of business is Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash ten. A resolution appointing an individual to temporarily assume responsibilities of clerk treasurer of the town of Dayton, state of Indiana. This resolution is basically to appoint somebody temporarily until we have our meeting on July second. Uh, we have our July second meeting, at which time we will attempt to elect a, a permanent clerk treasurer.
I can speak.
Have anything I have to?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit, so, um, as you guys are aware, the clerk treasurer resigned. Um, the town does not have a deputy clerk, um, to assume those responsibilities, so right now you're, you're without somebody who has been delegated the authority to do what the clerk does. In the absence of that, state code, um, after the resignation of the elected clerk treasurer, um, first, it goes to the council, who, if you can decide on somebody that you want to appoint to complete that term, um, and if you can reach an agreement on that, then that person can be appointed to, to fill that. After that, if you're unable to appoint somebody or decide on somebody, it would then unfortunately fall on one of the members of council to become the acting clerk treasurer for the remainder of that term. State law, prior to having that meeting to formally decide who's gonna, gonna take over the remainder of the term of clerk treasurer, um, requires, uh, a certain period of time for notice to go out. That wasn't possible before this meeting, just given the, how quickly that resignation happened. Um, so I believe tentatively the plan is to have that on, on July second as a special meeting to appoint that individual. But during the interim between, between now and then, you need somebody to, to receive bills and do all that kind of stuff as, as things happen. My advice generally is to, to select that person and do it via resolution, so you have a record of it. So that's what you're doing to, to temporarily give somebody the authority to fulfill the duties of clerk treasurer until you can have your special meeting to formally put the person in place that's gonna do it for the remainder of the term. Happy to answer any questions if, if anybody's got any.
Okay. Um, I would like to, uh, fill this resolution by appointing Cindy Flores. Make a motion to appoint Cindy Flores, uh, as temporary clerk treasurer for this, for this resolution.
And there's a little bit of a distinction, you're not appointing them as the clerk treasurer, you're really kind of appointing them to assume the responsibilities of clerk treasurer. Because that actual clerk treasurer role has to be, um, appointed and decided on July second special meeting, assuming that's the date you guys all decide on about that. So it's really somebody to just take over the responsibilities until there's somebody who could be selected to do that formally.
I'll second that.
Does the motion need to be modified?
I, I would modify it, yeah, I, because you made it to a point, her, it'd be temporary clerk treasurer, but I would just modify it to, to.
So to be temporary clerk treasurer, uh, until March July, or March July second, the?
The, the motion I would make is to, um, appoint her to assume the responsibility to clerk treasurer until July second.
To assume the responsibilities of clerk treasurer until July second.
Good.
Good.
I'll second that.
So she's, she's okay with it? You okay?
How they do my name is Florrie with a Y, but yes, I am. It's okay.
From this point forward, it won't be that way.
It's Florries from now on.
Oh. Okay. Yes, sorry about that. All right, motion made by myself and seconded by Steve. Carla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I vote yes.
So what, how do you spell your? Sorry.
C I N D Y.
C I N.
Actually, it's Cinderella. It's okay, C I N D Y. F L O R E Y.
F L O R E.
And that's gonna be twenty twenty-five dash?
Dash ten.
Do you want me to move up here or stay where? I think you should.
Yeah, you should. All right, moving on, uh, next up, I've got, uh, Brandy Bass, Combat Cookies. Uh, she wants to, uh, request the temporary closing Harrison Street for their, uh, car shows.
Real quick, what was the amount, the hourly rate of local government services?
Is it one sixty-five? One sixty-five, yes. I thought that one got updated.
Yeah, the one in front of you is updated.
My name is Brandy Bass, and it was Combat Cookies at two ninety-four Madison Street. And last year, we had a car show at Tricia's Red Bird Cafe, and it's a car show for the entire community, not just for the Red Bird Cafe and for Combat Cookies. Um, everyone is welcome, and we are asking to have the street closed on the date of the car show, which is Sunday, July twentieth of this year. And it will start, uh, cars usually start rolling in about nine thirty to get registered, and awards are at two, so we would be out of there in the later than two thirty. And we, um, have gotten signatures from all of the people who would be affected, who reside right in the area that would be affected, which would be from Harrison, on Harrison Street, from Main Street to Walnut Street. Uh, we'll use traffic cones as blockades that can be easily removed so that emergency vehicles can get in and out if they need to. And, um, yeah, I think that's it. So we're just asking for it to be closed for those few hours for the car show, like we did last year, to avoid any cata, potential catastrophes with pedestrians.
Scott, is there anything that, uh, feel like you wanna add to, to this, or any questions you'd have about that? Any council comment?
Not much smoothly last year, I would be able to actually attend, everybody seemed to be having a good time.
I'm gonna accept this. Until I'm, uh, close the road for that period of time for the car show.
On July twenty?
On July the twentieth.
I will second that.
Motion made by Rocky and seconded by Steve. Carla, how do you vote?
I'm staying.
Rocky?
I'll hold favor of.
Yes. Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll open up the, uh, utility service board meeting. Uh, anything from the attorney?
I do not have anything on any of these items unless anybody's got any questions for me.
Make a motion that we accept the adjustment, uh, report for the month of May.
I'll second that.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve. Uh, how do you vote, Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that passes. Got a request, uh, I'm making a motion for Kirk to attend online training with Alliance of Indiana to prep for his certified, uh, water operator license. Uh, cost is four hundred dollars, which I'd like the town to, to pay for.
I'll second it.
No question, so when, when's the training and how long does that take and?
The training is, uh, starts on, I believe, Thursday, July seventeenth, and it's from nine to three thirty, online training.
And when the, how?
It's, I'm sorry, it lasts for eight weeks. Eight weeks. So it's every Thursday for eight weeks, is that right?
Yeah. So it's just one day a week?
Yeah. Yes, sir. Did you have a question, Rocky?
No, I was just.
I'm sure we're not, you're not heard Kirk's face on. All right, so I have a motion for Kirk to, uh, on the training, and you said.
I think I mean, well, you did a motion, you said.
All right. Steve, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that passes. Uh, make, have a motion, I'd like to make a motion for, to allow Cindy Florrie, uh, who I spelled her name wrong, nonetheless, uh, eighty dollars so she can become a notary.
I'll second it.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Rocky. Questions? Steve, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And then, now we have the, uh, updated, uh, service contract for, um, local government services. Uh, we've been working with them, Suzie Bass and Janet, I'm not sure which Janet's last name is. Uh, but we've been.
Alexander.
Janet Alexander. We've been working with them for, for many years, uh, and just felt that this time it would be appropriate to, to update the contract. Everything stayed the same on, as their previous contract. Uh, we did have to add in, uh, oh, let's see, what was it, to be, uh, engaging in activities with the ramp. We added that in, and, uh, the rate is, uh, one sixty-five an hour, which, uh, their last contract was one fifty, and it said that, that, uh, in that contract, it said the rate went up ten percent every year. So I'll make a motion that we accept the addendum to service contract, uh, and the contract for local government services and allow them to sign it.
I'll second that.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve, how do you vote, Carla?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that passes. Um, at this point, uh, Kirk had a family thing that he was, uh, doing tonight, and so I'd rather bring him on now so he could, cause he, I'd like for him to be able to leave. So if we can get the town manager to make his report now, I'd love to do that. Not that any objection?
Nope.
All right, so water, the water valve there on, um, Clifton, and Dayton Road, um, I thought, and it may be yet, but we're not, we're not totally sure, like, cause the ground was wet, it looked like it was leaking. But we got a bunch of rain that, that week, and, uh, so I kept an eye on it, and it seemed like it was drying up. So like Saturday, I think it was, we got like three inches of rain here, and today it seems drier than last week, them areas. So I talked to Atlas, and they, they seem to think that the ground was settling and the water, cause there was some, it was so saturated, cause there was about three hundred and sixty thousand gallons, you know, went in the ground that day right there, so. So we think as a, as the ground's settling, it's pushing the water up, trying to dry itself out. So I'll keep, keep an eye on it, but it seems like it's actually drier today than yesterday, and each day it seems to be getting drier. But, uh, so that valve that's supposed to be at the corner of Clifton and Dayton that we can't find, all the maps showed it there, the, the GIS and the Asbils. And so I got a backhoe, and we dug down about four and a half feet, ten feet section where it was supposed to be. Thought maybe we'd find some remains of a, of a pipe or something when they replaced the ADA ramp there on the sidewalk that they broke off, but there was nothing there at all, so. So not sure if there is actually a valve there, or maybe it's there and there's just no, um, box on it. So I mean, there's a couple options, I talked to Atlas. If we wanted to look for a valve there, um, there's this private locating company that has a sonar. So they run a machine on the ground and it sends a sonar down through the soil, and it hangs off different materials. But unfortunately with that, I was talking to the lady today, and that pipe is about eight, eight feet deep because there's storm sewer, or, or, uh, yeah, storm sewer. So being that deep, she said your chances are like twenty percent of that working because it's so deep there. Um, but there, there's two fifty an hour if you, if you wanted to try it, I don't know if it's worth it though, but. So our other option is, um, Atlas, they can hydro vac, basically, like what they did that night, shoot water and suck the dirt out, and they can get right to the pipe, and they can go along the pipe and see if there's an actual valve there. And then at that point, I guess, if there's not, there's a system they have, it's called the insert valve. They can put it on there and insert it live, so you don't have to shut the water off, and then it just clamps on and it works as a, a, a normal valve, but, um, the cost of that is, I'm gonna hold on to your chairs, but it's fifteen grand for a cost of one of them insert valves.
Is that just for the valve or does that have to put it in as well?
As installed too. So that would be fifteen thousand through Atlas for a, the back truck. Ins, uh, Atlas doesn't insert it, they have a company they work with that does that, specializes in that kind of valves. So, I mean, best option is that valve is actually there, and it's just never had a box put on it to get it to the surface, you know? But I did talk to, um, what's his name, Max Winlock, I think it is?
Yeah.
And he said that the Asbils in Deerfield are pretty accurate, like, he remembers them. Um, and everything that was on the Asbill should be there, he doesn't remember anything that wouldn't be there. But he doesn't, he doesn't remember actually seeing that valve there, but, uh, he believes that it's probably there, but. Did Carlos say he thought he? Yeah, Mark Carlos thought he seen it at one point too, so. I mean, I believe it's probably there, it's just.
So Atlas would be able to dig down and possibly find it, is what you're saying, and then if not, then we could do?
Yeah, so they would take that hydro vac, um, so they didn't hit any, or, you know, when they're, they don't wanna dig.
Right.
Don't wanna damage anything.
Right.
So that fifteen thousand, that was, you know, a high estimate on hydro vac, having it installed, backfilling it, reseating it.
But at this point, your, your belief is that we don't have a secondary leak inside of the last water main, right?
Yeah, it appears the ground, I mean, the ground seems to be drying every day, it's getting drier. So hopefully that's the case. Oh, yeah. One other option could be is that it's the water, it, or it sealed itself off, that could be another, you know, as you said, we no longer have a leak, we, we had it, and now it's sealed itself off. Or if it is leaking, then it's found another way for the water to go somewhere else, which could. Yeah.
Which would be a bigger issue.
Right. So, um, we, we don't know for sure. Yeah. But we do know that if, if we, we don't wanna shut the whole town down again, ever, possible. Yeah, if there was a valve there, we could shut six people, or six homes off right there, three on each side of the street. And while Atlas is doing their work, nobody needs to be shut off. Yeah, you wouldn't have to shut anybody off actually to even insert this valve. It would just be. So.
Unless they were to find another leak.
Yeah, yeah, if they were to find another leak, then they would insert that valve and then shut that section off, and then we'd have an option of cutting that section of pipe out and just replacing it with a new pipe, if it was a rotten pipe or something, you know? Cause they did see that night, that pipe, they said wasn't that great a shape, there were some scratches on the backside of it that were fairly deep. And, but they clamped over it, but again, if the, if the pipe is odd around or egg shaped. It's hard telling, cause where that, where the actual break was, I would say it was probably ten feet deep, what'd you say? So usually they're like four to five, so.
The hole was well over both of gentlemen's standing, so.
It was quite, it was difficult to deal with, it was so deep. So we're looking at about fifteen K, that's probably our max, if they do the hydro vac and, and find the valve, uh, then it would be considerably less than that, I would assume. Yeah, if they just hydro vac, um, their hydro vac truck is two, two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars an hour. So then it would just be an hourly, if they found a valve, and it's just an hourly rate.
So. I'm sorry, so if, if it comes to the point where they cannot locate a valve, and, um, we're gonna have to add the valve. You said it's another company that actually does that, are they right there and they would do it, or do we have to wait for them to come in and?
No, so I, uh, JJ from Atlas, I, I talked to him, and he said it would be, they organize it, they organize the whole job, they get this company, and then if they don't need it, they just say, hey, we found it, but they would be the same day.
Basically, no call.
Yeah, yep.
Where they're proposing the vacuum, is that where you were already digging, or is there another spot they think you've had?
Uh, well, I'm just going off where the maps and the Asbill show, so that's where I would, I would go because of, you know, it gives me a. You also said that the, uh, pipe. Yeah. Twenty foot sticks. Yeah. So, so I think his assumption was that where the, uh, fire hydrant's at, it would be twenty feet from the fire. Is that the fire hydrant, it'll probably be right there, unless they cut the pipe short for some reason to fit it. Yeah, so we measured twenty feet, cause a, a water pipe is twenty feet thick, so we figured that they teed it by the hydrant, so we went twenty feet this way, Doug, and we went twenty feet that way. And the Asbill show is, the valve is twenty feet this way, but, uh.
Does it have any intersection between, uh, Clifton and Dayton?
Yeah, right between, in that, in that sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the road, right in that corner. Clifton and Dayton on the north side, northeast of Dayton.
On the northeast corner?
Uh, no, sorry, west, northwest. So I think it's, you know, I don't, something to, um, obviously if, if, if it breaks or starts leaking again, I don't know if we have a choice, you know what I mean, to, at that point, I think you might, would just do an insert. To, at that point, I think you might would just do an insert valve. Um, just to shut that section off, but hopefully.
But if, if, if it busts again like it did.
That's what I'm saying, you know?
So do we do it now or do we do it later, basically what you're saying?
Right. I mean, I think it, I think it should be done because you can isolate that section and.
What does everybody else think? What do you think Rocky?
I think they need to do it.
They need to dig down around that corner, if you can find a pipe, get close to it, sit there and shut the valves. I mean, there's gotta be a pipe there.
Well, there's a pipe, yeah, the water pipe, where the water main goes right.
I mean, that oughta be closer to that, that going, going all the way to where the leak was. See it in, it may be a lot closer.
If they've got a pr- proven well, isolated, it was, it's on the map where it should, yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
It's either, it's either finding it or fixing it.
Basically, yeah, you either find it or once you have it covered, you might as well throw a valve in there because.
So either way, when this is all done, I told, we're gonna have a way to, or to shut it off.
Yeah, and I mean, another.
I, I think it makes more sense, let's see if we can find it, if we can, let's just go ahead and take care of it, we're here. I don't, I mean, I don't like spending money with.
Well, another, another way.
Better than, I don't know.
Yeah.
Right.
But another way to look at it is, uh, if you plan it, schedule it, you're not paying an emergency.
Right.
You know?
Good point. Okay, well then, I will make a motion that we move forward, we get Atlas out to look for and or replace the mystery valve.
Second.
Motion made by Steve and seconded by Carla.
How's my man Steve for a minute?
Yes.
They vote Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
I'm not, I'll hold you up, I'll say yes.
And I say yes, okay, so.
So find a unicorn.
I'll call Atlas up and get it's good.
Make it pretty, Chris.
Yeah. Um, CCMG update, uh, college is, is done. Um, I think today or tomorrow, they're gonna have guys come out of Black Dirt and start seeding next to the sidewalks that they did.
Where did they do that from, I don't remember.
What, what was that?
Do all of college or just part of it, I don't remember, I don't remember what we did.
Uh, I meant conjunction is almost done, um, conjunction is from this, from, uh, college to Cagle's Mill.
Okay.
You're talking about the, you, you, we say dug, you're talking about the cement.
The cement work, yeah. Um, they're working on college from Dayton to conjunction now. And on market here to, um, thirty eighth here. So, uh, tomorrow, if it rains, it'll hold them up a little bit, but they're supposed to be done with the concrete work. Um, Wednesday, that's the plan next week. And then it sounded like probably July first or somewhere around there, they were gonna start milling and paving the streets here. And they said that should only take probably a week, so.
The streets with sidewalks and then, and then also there's two cul-de-sacs over on Shady Lane.
Yeah, over there too, yep. And, uh, you asked me to see if I can get a pricing there out here to do striping.
Yeah.
I talked to Mike, uh, Smith and he said. They won't do any special pricing because they're not striping any of these roads, they're only doing the side, uh, walk.
So they won't already be out here, so there's no real savings.
So they ain't gonna have any savings. And they, they ain't gonna have the time to do any, any more, any extra.
That's fine, that's fine.
So at this point, we'll have to, if you decide.
We'll find somebody else.
Find somebody else who, yeah.
Okay.
Um, thanks for passing that, uh, Alliance training. Any other questions?
Study hard.
Jump out here, so.
Nick is proud.
Yeah.
All right, you're good, thanks.
All right, uh, any old business? Public comment?
Got a couple things that are non-controversial. On the striping, uh, this is just popping in my head, I don't know if somebody wants to look into it. Between the railroad tracks on Dayton Road South and Shady Lane, two years ago, the stripes were put off. Put over eleven to twelve inches off center. So when those trucks come across those tracks, that's why their wheels are always making that rut that you guys have filled in several times. On the west side of Dayton Road with gravel and we had the company that agreed to re-stripe it. And then I don't know, either the election or something, or they said it was too late, we're gonna do it after election and they didn't do it. But anyway, you're always gonna have a problem as long as the stripes are off center. And once they get down to Shady Lane, then they go back and they're centered on the road, so. Uh, you might wanna check on it, might not, or you can keep filling gravel down on the edge, so. And a lot of times I watch those trucks come over and those big tires go on there and it almost pulls them over and then they. Compensate and pull back and they're almost in the other, across the middle, so. If you could do it, it'd be nice. The second thing is before, I'm just gonna make a request again, that to do what a lot of other towns do. Before we get into arguments about a loop system and, which this town needs a lot of loop systems or could put in a lot of loop systems. But they're, uh, understand from BFNS, you don't need any loop system, it's all gauged for. More houses and stuff in our present town without doing loop systems, it's always good to do a loop system, but. There's quite a few places to be done, but I checked with several other towns and one of the main things that you don't have to loop. Loop your streets and everything is just flush your hydrants and exercise your valves more. And I suggested a year ago, we do it, we're gonna start doing it once a year on every valve. I think Mark used to do it every two years or even three years. And I always told Mark, I think we oughta start doing it every, every year. And, and it never was a big problem until that pressure started dropping down as Baker Farms did more houses. And we never had to look for valves and everything, I was just at the end of a year ago, so. Anyway, but if you exercise those, Mulberry does it, exercises them every month throughout the main year. Every single month and it cleans your water up, our water's already clean, cause we get it from Lafayette and it's great, but. It just will save a lot from, that's an easy way of exercising and, uh, opening your hydrants up once a year. You won't have any problem with anything without, cause I know what this is gonna be, some of your, you have a loop system and you want it on my property.
Your three minutes are out.
So, anyway, you could think about that, check with other towns, see what they do, but that's a, a good, easy option. And you can either pay for it done or you can have your maintenance guy go around and at that.
Sir, three minutes around.
Yeah, and do it, uh, for very little money, so, thank you.
Any other public comment? House of comment? Got anything, Eric?
No.
Nope? All right, now let's start the, uh, the town council meeting then.
Uh, we're gonna roll call, uh, attorney. Uh, motion for a special meeting on the last second?
Yeah, so, uh, I've kind of talked about that a little bit earlier. Um, you guys currently have two vacancies because two folks resigned in the last month.
Right.
Um, one council member and, uh, one clerk treasurer. Uh, the process is relatively the same, you've gotta give ten days notice. And then you can either have a special meeting or a irregular meeting to select a new person to fill the vacant role in council. And a person to fill the vacant role of clerk treasurer. If you're unable to find somebody to fill the vacant role of clerk treasurer, then it falls on one of you guys, so. Um, you need to, whether it's, uh, this July second date, um, or another. You guys need to figure out, uh, a date and make a motion and second the date that you're gonna have a special meeting to, to make those decisions.
So because of the timing, July second is, is pretty much the date, I think. And, uh, also because it was the thirty days and Bridget was June second, so it was July second. So, that's, and, uh, and because of the ten day notice, so things kinda worked against us. Anyhow, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we have a special meeting on July second to fill the vacant council and clerk treasurer positions.
I have a question, is there a reason why we can't just do it on the first, on Tuesday? We normally have our meetings on Tuesdays, so it's just a question, I'd be a day earlier.
Yeah, uh, I would just, I would prefer to do it on the second. I've already got the paperwork already typed up and everything to do.
All right, I'll change my plans. Go ahead.
All right, I made, I've made a motion, I'll give you a second.
I, I would add the time too.
Oh, it's, it's six o'clock, July second, two thousand twenty.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve, how do you vote Carla?
Sure.
Rocky?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I vote yes. And, uh, so you've got the envelopes, Cindy?
I do.
Okay, so get those in the mail first thing in the morning, okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so the next thing is the corporate resolution for the bank credit card. Uh, this, I wanna talk to the bank in order to get Bridget's name off of the credit card, we need to get it assigned. Uh, we, we need to, we need to put in the minutes that they're taking her off the credit card. But we need to keep a credit card going because we do put several things on the credit cards, Amazon charges, uh, tractor supply charges. Those type of things. So, uh, I would like to suggest that I get, go ahead and put my name on the card. Uh, but we don't need to issue any cards to anybody else.
So are we gonna have to go through this again when we have a clerk treasurer?
Uh, we wouldn't necessarily have to, I don't think.
Depends on what the bank's policy is, um, they, they might, i- if you select somebody that's the clerk treasurer, that's gonna have authority to use the card. Um, they, they'll probably want another resolution authorizing that person to also be added as an authorized user. But it, it depends on what the bank's policy is on, on who, who's authorized to, what they need to authorize somebody to do that, so, um.
So, or would you, are you suggesting maybe we wait until the second? So, I guess that could be an option.
I just, I mean, whoever the clerk treasurer is, I think it makes more sense to put it in their name or the one's gonna have to be using it and.
So we, we can get by without a credit card until, uh, Staples, that's the other one too. We don't have, we've only got accounts, but the only accounts we have are with Menards, so.
So I mean, it's the, all we have to do is re, just do the paperwork again, right, it's not like we have to.
I, I would, yeah, that's what I would guess, I would chat with the bank.
We don't have to draw blood or do anything overwhelming, it's just redo the paperwork, I just, I know the card gets used for, for some emergency stuff in the regular day-to-day operations, I just. I'm a little hesitant to limit what we can or can't do, just. I mean.
I wasn't necessarily, necessarily saying no now, I'm just, I just think, I don't think it needs to stay that way going forward, I'm just saying.
Right, we, we.
I'm just asking if we can do that again.
So we can.
That we would need to do.
So if we pass this now, we can put it in my name and then when we get a clerk treasurer and take my name.
Switch over again.
We can switch her back a little bit, I'm, I'm fine with that. So, uh, I guess I'll make a motion that we, we pass this resolution, uh, putting my name on there and allowing me, uh, the, uh, to, to sign for this.
I'll second that.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve, how do you vote Carla?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. Make a motion that we accept the balance docket, amount, uh, for the month of May, two thousand twenty-five. An amount of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-four cents.
I'll second that.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve, how do you vote Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yeah.
Carla?
Yes.
I vote yes. Make a motion that, uh, we accept the, uh, the docket, claims docket of July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. In the amount of, uh, one hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-three cents. And, uh, I just mentioned that we had a final update that was available that right before this meeting. And the reason for that was that we had an invoice from Mark Harlow and, uh, we wanted, we wanted to get that put on in this month's meeting. So that changed from the one I had sent you guys last night, so. Motion made by myself.
I'll second that.
I, I have a question for, for last night, he was postponed payment, I think it was for her BURK.
CBURK, yes.
Yeah, I, did that ever get completed, did he send? So it was still holding on to that?
Still holding on to that.
So how long can we hold on to that before we have to void the check and, and, yeah, I don't know, we can or not, but I'm just asking.
So, uh, as I remember what I was told, uh, you'll see some dated checks on the, uh, bank report. There's a lot of dated checks on there, uh, after two years, then they have to be taken off.
Oh, so we can, we can hold it until they actually, what if they don't, what if they choose not to do work, can we just void the check out? And we don't pay them or?
Uh, I, 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 I don't know the answer to that, Carla. I'm, I'm pretty confident that they want their money and it's just a matter of giving us those hours.
I was just curious, I just, yeah, we have.
That has, that hasn't, that hasn't gotten taken care of yet, but it's been a, it's been a busy, it's been a busy month, to say the least, so. That is, it's still on my mind, I'll, I'll be looking for it and. See, motion made by myself, seconded by Steve. How do you vote Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yeah.
Carla?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I'll make a motion that we accept the May appropriation report, bank reconciliation, fund report and the revenue report. I'll second. Motion made by myself, seconded by Rocky, how do you vote Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I guess I actually should meet Glenn and Cindy to do all this, now that I think about it.
I'm learning, you're doing a good job.
All right, well.
Bridgette, you still with it?
No.
Bridgette, you still with it?
She called, Bridgette almost called me.
Oh, I saw, yeah.
Anyhow, we'll just go ahead and. All right, so I make the motion that we approve the utility board meeting minutes of, uh, uh, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. And the town council, uh, meeting minutes of May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve. Rocky, how do you vote?
Uh, well, yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, Cindy, clerk treasurer?
I knew you were gonna say that.
Did you do both of them?
Yeah.
Do I need to say?
Yeah, if you want, you know? Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know if there was gonna be an adjustment, she had a question if there was an adjustment to pay or.
If, because I'm doing this until July second, I think it's worth a lot more than what I'm making as a utilities clerk. And it's gonna be, I mean, it won't be completely full-time, but I would like to work more hours so that I can get both jobs done. Because I have been in working with Suzie and stuff.
So, uh, these, of course, their salary ordinance would allow for that. What do you think, Carla?
I, I like a little, a little more detail presented, but I think we need to look at the salary ordinance and talk about it. But I don't have a problem with it heading on.
So.
Changed.
For this, so starting now for the interim period, that's what you're asking for?
Just until, yeah, July 2nd, just this interim, and what do you wanna know, like my, what I've done in my life to? I'm being chiseled. Oh, okay, I can help with that. I am making fifteen dollars an hour as a clerk treasurer. When you compare, huh?
Utility clerk.
Yeah, sorry, thank you. Utility clerk. As it goes, I mean, and I'm in charge of a lot of things then, even, and I helped Bridget do things. But by doing both, I would think it would be worth twenty-five dollars an hour. That's what I think I'm making. Does that help? Okay.
So.
I just wanted to go on record.
Okay.
So it, uh, I'm not sure how, what is, what, there's a top pay for the utility clerk, which was more than fifteen dollars. I don't know exactly what that was.
Yeah, and you wouldn't be able to pay more for that role without amending the.
But she's assuming other responsibilities.
Yeah, her title's the same, though. So I, I think you'd probably.
Well, you have, we have a range.
There's a range typically. There's, I've never seen your salary ordinance because we weren't counseled when you last adopted, I don't think.
Okay, let's say that fifteen is the, let's just, let's take the argument at the moment. Let's say fifteen is max. Could we pay that and then, uh, let's say July 2nd comes around and we put her in the role, can we back pay?
Um, yeah, I'd have to look at salary ordinance. I mean, I think you'd probably have more discretion to issue bonuses.
I was gonna say, can we go to the bonus or something?
Yeah, I think you'd probably have more discretion in the salary, but it's hard for me to shoot from the hip without having a little salary ordinance.
So we could, we could look and discuss it a little more. Will that change your mind on doing the job if we can't give you an answer to that?
No.
Salary compensation for elected officials for two thousand twenty five.
And I'm not elected.
Right, you ain't, yeah, not elected.
That's right.
I think it exceeds forty hours a week.
Do I think it will?
Yeah.
I can't foresee that happening, but, um, you know.
It'd be more than. Yeah, I'm, what is it, you're thirty?
I'm up to thirty-five, but I've never.
Currently?
Yeah, I try to stay because of certain circumstances.
You're up to thirty-five just recently.
Just as a utility clerk, right, yeah.
What would you give in a week for hours?
Oh, thirty.
Thirty.
So utility clerk is, our ordinance says fifteen to twenty dot hours, not exceed thirty-five hours.
Hours, dollars?
Hours, not exceed thirty-five hours.
But what's the maximum pay?
Twenty dollars.
Okay. So, so we.
So we should, we should be able to kick her up to twenty dollars.
You should be able, you'd be able to kick her up to twenty dollars. In order to get it to twenty-five, I think you'd have to amend the salary ordinance.
So can we split the difference? Until July 2nd, at which time, uh, you know, then we could use the salary ordinance for the existing, our existing salary ordinance on that, on her.
Sure.
And discuss that, and then we need to figure out a stipend to make up any difference.
That's what.
Well, if we're gonna go through the stipend or bonus, why don't we just leave her fifteen and do the whole thing as a bonus? That way you're not changing her salary.
Well, we're, at that point, you're going to change, we're gonna be redoing another salary ordinance. Right? Because that will have to be included. Any kind of a stipend would have to be included in the salary. So what's the, uh, the salary compensation for, uh, elected officials?
I think the, the cleanest thing would be to move to temporarily increase her salary to twenty dollars during the period where she's a superintendent.
It's for two weeks.
Yeah, for that two-week period, and then it reverses back.
I'm, I'm fine with that. Are you okay with that?
But I'll need lunch.
I don't know.
I'm joking. Twenty dollars is fine.
I'll make a motion, we need to take her, bring her in at lunch.
Yes, I'll make a motion to increase her hourly rate to twenty dollars an hour, um, uh, and the maximum of thirty-five hours. Are you fine with that, or you think you'll need the forty?
I don't, can't, can I go up to forty? Cause I wouldn't mind having that, just.
That, well, the ma, no, cause that's.
You have to be within the maximum.
You can work forty, but you can only pick thirty-five.
Okay, I'll take thirty-five.
He's generous like that.
Yeah, he keeps saying, aren't you gonna volunteer?
Um.
It'll, it'll pay off. Alright, I'll second that. Motion to increase Cindy's pay to twenty dollars an hour for up to thirty-five dollars. Motion made by Carla and seconded by me. How do you vote, Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Motion passes. Anything else, Cindy?
No.
I, I just have quick questions. So I just wanna know how you're doing, how, are you feeling stressed, are you feeling okay with what you're doing so far? Are you feeling good?
I feel pretty good about, I mean, because Bridget, I told Bridget in the beginning, I don't want to just set idols, so she let me help her do things, so. And I've worked for years in financials, payroll, AP, so it's not, the only thing that's different is I'm working for municipality. So I need to learn some of that, but, you know, never too old to learn.
Uh, area plan representative report. Wanna talk about this?
Well, sure, we've got Uzo Amendment Number One One Nine. The mission to look forward, a, the addition of adding a, a new zoning, R one Charlie C. Um, it's a slightly smaller lot than the, the B. Yeah, the idea behind it is, um, to be able to make more affordable housing, make smaller homes, smaller lots. But it's a matter of, you know, area to area. It passed through the Area Planning Commission. Um, I think for the county, it's probably a good idea for us as, as our own municipality. I'm not sure, so.
This is, this is separate as far as it's just a law, it's not like what they talked about before, I'm having these separate.
No, it's not a secondary home.
Okay, I, yeah, I didn't think so much.
No, no. This is purely a matter of, hey, you know, and get more, you know, with the advent of smaller homes, tiny homes, things like that. You could get more homes on a bigger, on a big spread than you could with a smaller lot. Again, their, their, their big concern is affordable housing for everybody. But here, again, I, I lean towards, you know, we're more rural, I like, think we need, you know, I like bigger lots, I like, um, that spread. I think that's part of the nice thing about living in a small town, being more rural, is you, your neighbors aren't right next door, doesn't shake your hand through the windows.
This, this would allow for forty-foot, uh, forty-foot front lots, front should be forty feet. Whereas the R one is between seventy-five and eighty. It's one of those two numbers, right?
But it's also, like, is it tightening up, like, smaller home as opposed to?
Yeah, they're not gonna put the same-sized house they put in bigger farms, but, and, and I have it, that was what was explained to us anyway.
Well, it, the homes could be up to eighteen hundred square feet.
Zero yard.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're zero yard, and the other thing I think that is really concerning is parking. Cause you get a, you get a three-bedroom house, you've got, you know, a lot of people in there. And department, the, the houses themselves, uh, could be twenty-eight foot wide. The front of the house can be twenty-eight foot wide with the set, with the setbacks, so.
Where are, where are you seeing the forty-foot?
Well, I, I res, I did all the research on it when they, they did the, uh, I sent this to, to Ryan, asked him to respond to this. I thought I sent this to you, too.
Oh, yeah, I think I remember reading that. But I don't, I don't remember his response.
I wanted to know for sure, but, well, his response was, was really not the whole thing. You know, he told me what the minimum front rear or side setbacks were gonna be, which is what was already in, which was in the ordinance there, or the, the resolution. So he told me, he told me that again. I asked him what the set, if how setbacks were measured, if they were from wall to wall or from the eaves. Cause I didn't know about that, while it was from the wall to wall. Cause I see some houses these days where they don't have that, hardly any eaves on the houses. And I thought, oh, maybe that's how they're getting by with, you know, with sitting along there. And then interesting enough, one of his, one of his replies was that R one C does allow recycling collection facilities by right, just like all other single-task residential centers. So if you wanna start a recycling collection facility at your house, apparently it's allowed. Kinda blows my mind. I just hope nobody take, nobody discovers I have a site statement. So, what do you think, what, what's your recommendation, Steve?
Uh, uh, my recommendation is we don't accept it or don't, um, what's the term I'm looking for? Accept it or implement it?
Decline, decline our recommendation.
Decline, yeah.
I would, if you take no action, I think it would ultimately end up passing after a certain period of time.
Yeah, so I think after sixty days, they presume that we, we approve it. But did you read through, I just now saw the permitted uses for R one C, cemeteries, lots, childcare, public park, what did you mean?
Yeah, I, some of that was kinda confusing.
Water supply systems.
But before, I, I, I intuitively thought that we may not do this, so I didn't really dive into the whole lot more of it. Personally, I think we're happy with our, with R one laws here.
I agree.
So what's a, what's a correct terminology to decline this?
I think you just make a motion to decline the Uzo Amendment Number One Nineteen.
Make a motion to decline Uzo Amendment Number One Nineteen.
I'll second that.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve. Carla, how do you vote?
I hate this devil niggas. If I say yes, I'm approving the no, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's yea for nae.
Yeah, it's yea for nae.
Darn it.
Rocky?
Yea.
Yea for nae?
Necessarily confused.
Yes.
And I vote yea for nae. So we're not passing, we're not accepting.
Now, do we need to notify them that we?
I'll, I'll let them know. Unless you wanna do it.
I think that we'll just send Ryan an email saying that.
Okay, why, why don't you go ahead and do it? That would be, that would be fun. We already had town manager, um, Marshall Taylor said that we're gonna postpone this discussion. Let's see. Oh, so the new business was, uh, to talk about the clerk treasurer and the council vacancy positions to be filled, hopefully on July 2nd.
So we're opening up to, anybody interested in town, what should they do?
I know we've, I've had some people approach me already.
That's right.
Rocky's had some people approach him. So I, what do you suggest? What, what do you guys wanna do? Tell me.
Are we talking about the, the, the chair here, or are we talking about the clerk?
We're talking about both, yes. That's, we have to, we need to decide on both, but we can talk about each one individually if that's what we wanna do. I mean, I, I had sent all you guys an email to kinda stir this, stir your thought process on, so.
Well, I would assume we have to post the clerk position, though we had some way she performed it, it's, it's open up. We could just.
Just has to be at a special meeting. You have to post notice of that special meeting, that you guys are gonna meet, yeah. You guys are gonna meet, consider who's gonna fill that role. State code basically allows you guys, a majority of folks on the council, to select somebody to step into that role. If you're unable to do that, then it falls on one of you guys to assume that role, so, um, and it's.
But do we have to do any kind of a search or is it just a matter?
Can we do a search, so?
You, you, individually, I, I would say that if you wanna go out and talk to folks who might be interested, that might wanna show up to that special meeting to talk, I don't think there's any issue with that. What, what you certainly can't do is have a majority of you guys meeting with people and doing that. It's an act that would constitute public meeting, um, that wasn't noticed, so.
I think they're talking, posting like a job opening.
Oh, I, I don't, yeah, I mean, I, I think you, you certainly could.
Kinda, I'm, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm misreading it.
That you can, uh, indeed, I think, well, that's, that's for, that's for a job. I mean, for an employee opening, this is, this is an opening for an elected official.
Right.
And your, your timeline's probably not, because I mean, you, you basically, particularly for clerk treasurer, you, you have to fill that role within thirty days. I mean, the Board of Elections is gonna make you fill that role within thirty days, so, um, you know, how, and, like I said, the, the statute's pretty, um, pretty bare bones as to what you can and can't do. So I think there's a pretty fair amount of discretion. The only thing is, you gotta, you gotta notice a, a public meeting, um, whether it's a special meeting or at your regular scheduled meeting in order to discuss it and make that selection. That notice has to go out, um, ten days prior to the meeting. Um, it has to be published like, like you would any other, any other meeting, and the, the decision and the discussion should take place at that public meeting. So now that doesn't prevent one of you individually from saying, hey, John, are you interested in this? Because that's not a public meeting, um, you know.
So then for the council position, is, since that's also an elected position, same statute, it's basically applied?
Same, same thing. Um, I would, I would say that the, for the, the, the vacant council position, you're probably not gonna get an angry email from the Board of Elections saying that this needs to be filled immediately, like you would for the clerk treasurer position, which I think is, is.
I'm not sure.
Well, maybe. But it, it's, uh, it, it, so the process is generally speaking the same. With that, though, there's not that fallback mechanism of somebody from the council's gonna do it if you can't decide on somebody, um, like there is. For that, it's just, it's gonna take three or four of you guys deciding on who you want to fill, to fill that role, whoever that might be. And that person, of course, being willing also to accept that, that, that high salary that you guys all get as, as council, council members.
I know in the past that we have, uh, offered it to the town. Anybody who might be interested in, in filling that position, uh, sends a letter. Who you are, what you did, and why you wanna do it. And then we can go through those.
Like with any, any public meeting, the more, the more public involvement is always the better. I mean, um, you know, the more, the more engagement you get for folks for everything, such as this, the better. So I, I don't see any, any issue with, with publicizing the need for these roles more rather than less. In fact, I think the, the idea is to publicize it more rather than less, to, um, to, to find the, the best qualified individuals to fill both of them. Because they're, they're both essential, and you're, you guys are both gonna, you're gonna have to decide on who's gonna fill those of them here in the next week and a half. And that unfortunately doesn't give you very much time. And that unfortunately doesn't give you very much time to, but the thirty day window for both of them is a pretty, pretty short time period.
I think I, I emailed each one of you individually, uh, saying you want to provide me with something, we can put it on the town website. But I've never, I haven't heard any, had a response from them, so.
Legal opinion, there's, I don't think there's anything wrong with putting something on the, on the town website if you want to. Saying, we've got a special meeting on this date, and if you're interested, let us know.
I think of, uh. People that showed an interest so far. Uh, the clerk says get them to maybe submit a letter by that July second meeting. Cause we're planning on doing something at that meeting during the city, if I'm correct. Okay, so.
So you, I, I know you told me you talked to three people.
Right.
So you wanna contact those three people?
Yeah, me too.
And do that?
I don't know, but you got anybody you spoke with, you haven't, you spoke with, but.
Spoke to them three people?
Okay, I think, I think that would be, probably same dude now as far as, uh, sort of crazy, huh?
Yeah, that's, that's the trickier one, cause I mean, it'd be nice to have some time to find, look for somebody that's qualified to do it. It, it is a tricky situation, because honestly, the job only lasts as long as the term lasts. Cause at the end of that, somebody else can run and you could theoretically, you had work.
Right.
Well, but, I mean.
But there on the same token, it'd be nice if we had somebody that knew they was interested, at least, give us a, you know.
The, the only other thing that I would note is, the state code is very specific with regard to clerk treasurer. That if you guys can't decide on somebody, it falls back on you guys. And if one of you has to fill the role of clerk treasurer, you don't get paid to do that, you, you just get paid your, your council stipend, you don't get paid. So I think that was probably put in there as an incentive to get the council to, to figure somebody out, um, and make a decision on it. But, um, that, that's just.
I kinda, I kinda feel like we're giving Cindy a trial run.
That's what I was kinda gonna, gonna say, I didn't wanna just drop it on her. You know, so, which. If we don't get anybody else, uh, that's somewhat qualified, and it's something Cindy would feel like she's interested in. Uh, I think that, uh, that'd be something we'll get some consideration too. Now, in so doing, that would open up another position in there. Well, once we can fill that too, I mean, you know, but.
But that's an easier.
What are you, what are your thoughts on getting a utility clerk?
Well, if I was to be offered the job and stay the clerk treasurer, I would wait until I had the clerk treasurer down. I have the utility clerk part down, I just need to make sure I know that, and then we could hire someone. I don't wanna, I don't wanna be learning this job while training somebody on that job, that's just, that would be a lot of stress.
So.
But I, I think I could do both, for a short time.
But I don't think you can get paid for it.
I don't mean. No, but, but she, well, she, I mean, you're gonna pay them more than what you pay in there.
Yeah, well, yes, if, if she was a clerk, then she would get the clerk's salary and all the.
And the, she'd be considered full-time and medical or all of that.
But the, but then she would not be the utility clerk, although she'd have to be doing the utility clerk job.
Correct, but you're, but you're willing, you would prefer to do both jobs until you got the clerk treasurer position down, before you have to trade somebody.
Right.
Okay.
And if you feel like you're, if she feels like she's capable of doing that.
Makes me feel a little bit, uh, a little bit more, I guess.
But we cross that bridge, we'll be, everyone will get to it, right?
Unless we get, you know, if we don't get anybody else to show the interest, at least we know we've got somebody that's got interest.
So, counts, the folks for the people who are interested in the council seat, we need to, we want their letters in here by when? I don't, I don't think we wanna do that the, the night of.
No.
I think we should probably get them in here a few days ahead, so we have a chance to read through them.
Yeah, so, the second is two weeks from tomorrow. I wonder if I seen that right, yeah, so. Give them to the twenty-seventh?
That's fine.
Friday, Friday before our meeting?
That's fine, and then it gets a chance to. Okay.
That's me.
And you're, you're just gonna post it on the, on the website?
You guys, you guys get, decide what you want to post on there and send it to me, send me a PDF, and then I'll put it on there. So you guys, you three decide what you wanna put on there.
Well, I'm not good at that kinda stuff, I was just gonna call the three people that I know and tell them, hey, I need a letter, we need a letter by the twenty-seventh.
Do you have specifics that you want them to include in the letter?
A little bit of background, why they wanna do it.
Right.
Anything they've done related. Only a lot detail.
I can come up with something, throw it out to you guys, and if you, if you agree with it, I'll send it to Mark.
Perfect.
Thank you.
That'll work.
Those are the worst.
All right, anything else you guys wanna discuss about this? All right, uh, old business, so, the, uh, music around, uh, under the gazebo. I don't know, Vicky was there, she was sitting with me, you, Kenny, you were there. Uh, boy, that was, that was, that was really great.
It was, it was nice.
That was really nice. Uh, as a matter of fact, we, we may have had the next Taylor Swift performing in this town that night, it was, that was pretty unbelievable, she was really good. Um, anyhow, uh, that night, uh, that was forty dollars for, for those entertainers, and, and that's already been paid for. Uh, but, uh, at our last meeting, Rachel came and asked for a total of, uh, three hundred and forty dollars. Uh, for, uh, for four performances. Now, she, she does all the organizing for free, and her husband, he played the saxophone, and he played for free. Uh, but then the other entertainment that they have, they feel the need to, to pay those people. She did her math wrong, because there were three of them instead of four. So we, we approved, we approved three hundred and forty dollar, or, no, we didn't approve anything, excuse me. She asked for three hundred and forty dollars at the last, at the last meeting. What she really needed was, uh, four hundred and. She, well, we need, we need four fifty total.
And what, and tell me what, again, what that's for?
That's to pay the entertain, the inter, the people who are like, that are not, not her husband, but the other people that they have coming to play.
Pay the talent.
Pay the talent, yeah, that's it. So, uh, you know, uh, I guess if we just, if we just say that we want to approve the three hundred dollars, I wish you would. Actually, yes, three forty, but forty dollars is paid, so it's only three hundred now. We could do that, or we could approve the four fifty total to pay for it. Thing is that this money, how we get this money distributed, I'm not quite sure how to, how we do that. Uh, I think that in order to pay somebody, we need to get, uh, a receipt from them, one thing, right? And then we need to, we'd have to write a check specifically to them. So on July twenty-sixth, uh, they're gonna have the next one, and the guy that's gonna be paying, playing, his name is Grant Spence, uh, Grant Spence. So I also, um, went out and, uh, I thought, well, I'm gonna ask some people for some money. I think, uh, Tyrone mentioned that at the last meeting. And BFNS, uh, I asked them, and they said that, that they made a donation of five hundred dollars, right?
Yes.
To, uh, our community enrichment fund, that's what I thought. We'll put all the money in the community enrichment fund, and then if we're, if we're paying for somebody or something, then we'll come out of that. And, uh, I also asked, uh, C B Burke, and I don't know if they, did you?
Nothing, yeah.
Received anything from them, so I don't know if they're gonna step up. I know this law firm, I'm thinking about asking them.
No pressure, you just gotta ask first.
I'm thinking about asking them.
Yeah. Anyhow, so.
MacAllister's my next student, huh?
Uh, there's a whole litany of people, and, but because of everything that's happened in the last month, it's just, I've been really limited to what I can do. Anyhow, so we've got money to cover all of it, I guess at this, I'm asking for this meeting, and I want everybody to understand. For this meeting, a motion to approve a hundred and fifty dollars to Grant Spence, uh, from the community enrichment fund. Uh, for the July twenty-sixth music under the gazebo performance from him.
So you just wanna ask for the one for now?
I'd just like to ask for the one for now, and then I think each month I'll come back and we'll ask for the, the next ones.
The people that are satisfied from the previous one, the three people you've talked about, they've already sat?
Yes, they've already.
They've already been paid. Okay.
And not, and not by the town, they've already.
I got you.
They've, they've already been paid.
I'll second that.
All right, any questions? Another question. All right, motion made by myself, seconded by Steve, how do you vote, Carla?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay.
Can I?
Yes, you have a question?
The only, um, I would like an invoice, anyone to make it and send it, and maybe the week before, so that I can have the check ready and ready to go.
Right.
Okay?
And then, and, yes, and then they'll get, they'll get the check. At the performance or after the performance, that way we, we know that they performed. Okay, all right, public comment? Do you? Council com?
Yeah, hang on.
Excuse me.
Did we wake you up?
Yeah. Couple quotes there. That was great, you guys didn't vote for that resolution on the housing and stuff, but. Steve, when you say it's a, a four, or mark a forty foot lot, how, how, width on front, which is ridiculous. How, how big is the lot?
It, it could be up to a hundred and ten feet deep.
So what's that, how many square foot is that? Forty-four hundred or? Forty-four hundred, so Malakasus is on ten thousand, and then you go R one A, that's seven, seventy-five hundred. Like Deerfield, and they're talking about putting an eighteen hundred square foot house, which could have. Eight, fifteen hundred square foot garage, like a barn to many of them, you only count the living space. Seems like, I'm glad you turned it down, that's, that's somebody trying to push something in there. Do we have a written agreement for the emergency road out here at Baker's Farm that says they take care of it, and it's their road now?
It's, it's not actually a road, it's a, it's a utility.
Okay, do they, who, who has that in their name?
I believe that, that those proper, the, the utility, that, those properties where that road was built actually belonged to the homeowners that joined. It was built on, it was built on their property.
Well, I, you might wanna check it, I think when they did the subdivision, they get their roads in, including the emergency road. And then they turn it all over the town of Dayton, and if that's the case, when we had the engineers look at it, they said. It needed to all be replaced, it'll be breaking apart, even if you don't use it, but by the heating and thawing in eight or nine years. So what you don't wanna do is in eight or nine years have to replace seventy, eighty, ninety thousand dollar road. If all of a sudden they say no, it's the town of Dayton's, you know, so.
It seems like we went through this a couple of years ago, because, um, because there was some issues with the road. Um, and at that point, we determined it was their road, and that's why Malakas paid to have it repaired. He paid for all the repaving that happened out there.
Well, there should be some paper or somewhere that's saying it is their road or that they own it, yeah. So, uh, the last thing before my three minutes is up. It's been fifteen, sixteen months now, and you guys haven't done anything to this place over here. You've got the building falling apart, exposed, are you gonna even mow the grass back there? I mean, it's two foot tall, everybody else in town has to mow their stuff. Everybody else in town gets fined if they don't, or their building front of it's falling apart, you know? Lot of people have commented in town, I would think, uh, uh, wait, I would think that, especially you, Mark, don't take care of it. Since you put the pressure on everybody else, so.
I think you're gonna get your comment here, or your, your answer here just in a minute.
Okay, good.
Any other public comment? Council comments, Steve, do you have any?
I do, um, I've given you all a copy of this, the contract from, our contract with the contractor. Um, we've gotten the, what, the gas meters removed from the property across the road, gotten the spacers removed from across the road. He's pulling his permits as we speak, um, and we should be able to go move forward with the demolition of the property sometime within the next two to three weeks. We just need to sign the contract and get it back on.
So, uh.
I'm sorry, you said they start when?
He said he could probably start it within two to three weeks. The contract was our contract, we sent, Patrick gave me to send to them, so it's our contract. And then he signed his, signed copies, sent it back to me, and we just need to sign it, and we'll be ready to go. He's pulling a permit, so we don't have to.
Well, I'll make a motion that, uh, we allow me to sign the contract.
I'll second that.
Motion made by myself, seconded by Steve, Steve, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rocky?
Carla?
Yeah, Carla?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Any other council comment?
I have five questions, so he handed me this to, for me to sign, but is that related to his number?
Yes, it is, and if you want, if you look on the, uh, on her, uh, agreement that she sent.
This is for Cindy.
To assist the town court in an hourly movement, this is for, this is for Susan Bass.
My apologies. Okay.
And that's, that's in, that's in.
I just, I just wanted to be sure before I sign it.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Patrick, on this contract, there's a place for everybody this night to, to, to mark your, on one, or do we all have to do it?
I would have all, if there's signature on it for all of you, I would just have.